All right, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Planning Commission of January 10th, 2023. If we could rise for the salute to the flag, please, and Commissioner Paul will lead us. Welcome, everyone, to the first Planning Commission of the year, Mission Meeting of the year. Roll call, please, Annie, and a warm welcome to Annie.
Thank you.
Now officially it.
Chair Barbe.
Here.
Vice Chair Paul.
Present.
Commissioner Barber is absent, Commissioner Doan is absent, Commissioner McCarroll.
Present.
Commissioner Spear.
Present.
And Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Great, and minutes, does anyone have comments or reflections? I just had a question, was Mr. Firestein, is that his name, was he here actually last time?
He was.
Okay, great, I have no. I want to make a motion.
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Spear, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Chair Barbe.
Approved.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Barber's absent, Commissioner Doan is absent, Commissioner McCarroll, approve, Commissioner Spear.
Approve.
And Commissioner Wyler.
Obstain, since I was not in attendance.
Great, thank you. Do we have any written communications?
There are none.
Nothing, nothing.
And oral communications?
None.
Okay, so we will go to our first public hearing, PL 22-0645, the zoning code amendment, and I believe Ms. Maronis is going to give us a presentation.
Chair, and before we start, I have to recuse myself on this item because of a potential financial conflict.
All right, thank you so much, I forgot to mention the disclosure. Anyone else have a disclosure to make? No one, thank you.
All right, good evening, Chair Barbe, Planning Commissioners, my name is Veronica Maronis, Principal Planner, and this evening I'll be presenting our 2022 Omnibus Zoning Code update. Just to provide a little bit of background, the 2022 Omnibus Zoning Code update, which we'll refer to as the 2022 Omnibus, is a series of minor zoning code amendments to the city zoning ordinance made annually for the purposes of cleaning up minor formatting and grammatical errors such as typos, and to clarify and incorporate code interpretations as well as updating any language as required under state law. The annual update process was initiated in 2017, so this is the fifth year of Omnibus updates. The 2022 Omnibus consists of minor formatting, grammatical cleanups, as well as clarifications to existing requirements, minor modifications to existing processing such as streamlining, updating consistency with state law. For a list of proposed modifications and their corresponding articles within the zoning ordinance, please refer to Table 1 of the staff report. So tonight's request is to recommend approval of the batch zoning code update to the City Council for final action. So as referenced in Table 1 of the staff report, this slide shows all the proposed modifications under the 2022 Omnibus. A majority of the proposed zoning code amendments include changes of formatting to be consistent with the city's adopted writing style, as well as reference and consistency cleanups throughout the zoning ordinance. The rows highlighted in yellow entail the most comprehensive changes proposed in this year's annual Omnibus. And just for note, these types of updates are meant to be minor, non-substantive, and typically just really entail a lot of formatting, grammatical cleanup. So the proposed changes that were highlighted in yellow, here are some more additional details. So specifically Article 39, which is our off-street parking ordinance, entails a proposal to the parking adjustment process for the purposes of streamlining. Article 16, which is our commercial zones, entails the addition of a use to the permitted use table for consistency purposes with Article 63's hotel conversion ordinance. Article 63, which is our transient lodging facilities ordinance, includes an increased density allowance for 100% single-room occupancy conversions through the conditional use permit process. And finally, Article 70, which is our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, includes processing, streamlining for ADUs proposed on single-family zoned properties. So I'm going to go into a little bit more clarification on these four. So for Article 39, which is again the city's off-street parking ordinance, the proposed changes consist of streamlining the parking adjustment process for parking reductions up to 25% of the total parking requirement. This process is currently done at the administrative level through what's called an administrative adjustment permit. The city also permits for parking reductions over 25% through a minor conditional use permit. The proposed modification would allow for projects that require a major or regular conditional use permit to also process a parking reduction for up to 25% under that CUP. Currently, if a project requires that regular or major CUP and is requesting a reduction in parking of up to 25%, the applicant would be required to obtain both an administrative adjustment and the CUP. Therefore, this change would permit for the request all through the CUP. They wouldn't have to obtain both the admin adjustment and the CUP. In the event a project did not require a regular or major conditional use permit for their project, but were still requesting a parking reduction of up to 25%, they would have to obtain the administrative adjustment. Both Article 16 and Article 63 modifications relate to the city's hotel conversion ordinance, which was adopted by City Council in 2021. The hotel conversion ordinance's purpose is to streamline conversion of existing hotel and motel uses to various types of housing, such as single-room occupancy units, which are referred to as SROs, multifamily residential, supportive, and transitional housing. However, the adoption of the hotel conversion ordinance did not include any changes to permitted use tables in the commercial zones article of the zoning ordinance. The proposed modification would permit for SROs within only the general commercial GC zone through the process outlined in Article 63, Section 1348 of the zoning ordinance, which again is our hotel conversion ordinance. In addition to permitting for SROs within the general commercial zone as shown in Article 16, proposed changes to Article 63 include a provision for an increase in allowed density for 100% single-room occupancy conversion projects. Again, Article 63 provides a process for conversion of existing hotel motel uses within the city to various housing types, including these SROs. Article 63 limits the ability to expand the physical square footage of a hotel motel for the purposes of conversion, meaning that such conversion would not be able to significantly increase their building size through a conversion. Article 63 also sets a maximum square footage unit size for SROs of 400 square feet, along with a maximum average for unit sizes of SROs at 345 square feet. Therefore, with 100% SRO projects, 100% SRO conversion projects, there is the opportunity for excess floor area within the existing hotel due to the limited room size that would not be a potential issue for non-SRO conversions such as multifamily, because you could have larger units. You're not limited by those maximum thresholds. The proposed modification would allow for an applicant to process up to a 15% unit increase subject to the restrictions set by Article 63, which include the limitation on building expansion through the CUP process. Article 70, which is the city's ADU ordinance, would include, changes to this ordinance would include removal of the planning-specific permit for single-family zones currently required for all ADUs. The current ADU process requires an applicant to first obtain approval for their ADU through the Planning Division and then obtain a building permit. Under the proposed changes, any ADU proposed on a single-family zone would only require review through the building permit process, thereby reducing the number of permits required and streamlining the ADU development process. It should be noted that this change is proposed only for sites with single-family zoning designation, and that those properties with a multifamily zoning designation would still be subject to an ADU permit through the Planning Division and then subsequently their building permit. So for all of the proposed modifications under the 2022 Omnibus, environmental review, they all qualify as exempt under CEQA. Various statutory and ethical exemptions apply to the proposed zoning code amendments, which are all outlined on Pages 6 and 7 of your staff report. So with that, staff recommends Planning Commission recommend approval to the City Council for final action of the 2022 Omnibus Zoning Code update. And that concludes staff's presentation, I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much, that was very thorough. Questions from Commissioners? Rick? Commissioner Paul?
Thank you very much, I do have a couple of questions. On the table, first question is about Article 6, and that says clarification of standard development standards related to accessory structures, and that's a, I believe that's the 49%. It's on the other page, too. Shall not exceed 49% of the existing proposed habitable space. Is, why are we adding, why are we adding that? Is that something we added someplace else, or is it a change?
Thank you, Commissioner Paul, or Vice Chair Paul. So the intention of that was there is no restriction on accessory structure size, so theoretically there's the potential for structures to be constructed significantly larger than the primary use or the primary building on site. So for example, a single-family home with a large enough lot could propose a, you know, 8,000-square-foot garage, whereas the primary residence might be something like 2,000 square feet. So that's where the intent of that restriction came from, as discussed by the Planning Division as a whole.
So did that come up in a public hearing before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Where did the 49% come from then?
So if I can, less than 50% is less than what we would probably be considering part of the primary use. So as an accessory structure, it's intended to be less than what you would see as a primary use, so less than half of the size of the main.
Cool, thank you very much. Next question is on Article 47, and that's on Page 21. At least my notes say Page 21. And that's just, those 2,500 were supposed to be 500 originally?
Correct, so that was just a cleanup.
Article 56 is barbed wire on Page 24. So I guess this says that barbed wire used to be allowed in residential estate zones? And was, or is that, that was an accident? On Page 24, Article 56.
That's correct.
So it was allowed in residential estate zones?
It was not explicitly prohibited, so this is just a cleanup to eliminate that.
It wasn't supposed to be allowed?
It's not that it wasn't supposed to be, so much as direction change of prohibiting it.
I think it had a stipulation of a two-acre minimum to have the barbed wire before.
Before?
So the underlined is the new additions, the proposed amendments to the language, and then the strike-through is the existing language that's being proposed for removal. Anything that's not bolded and not underlined is the existing language.
Right, so the minimum of two acres applies for agricultural zones?
Correct.
So we don't allow barbed wire in any residential zone, right? But we allow barbed wire under like a CUP or a non-conforming? I'll give you the example is the apartments next door to Interfaith are ringed with razor wire.
Yeah, so if there was a code, if this was adopted and then a code compliance case was opened on that, and they did not have an approval for that barbed wire, let's say through a conditional use permit or a plot plan, a major plot plan that permitted it for whatever the operations were approved at that time, then it would be a code compliance issue and have to be consistent with the zoning code.
Right, so I guess my question is, in that particular example, is that not code compliance, that there's some exemption for that property?
I'm not aware of anything specific to that property. A lot of times, properties have been developed years ago, and these types of materials were used at that point. They may not have been regulated at that time, or they may have been installed without the benefit of a permit, I couldn't tell you specific to that property, but that, we see that plenty of places throughout the city on various developments, whether it be for fencing and/or other situations where you wind up having non-conforming, non-conforming structures, uses, et cetera, because codes change over time or because they were potentially installed without permit.
So could, so I only see barbed wire a few, in a few residential, I want to say places, I mean where residents, where people live, regardless of what the zoning is. Can, even if it's been there for 30 years, can we, can we ask, can we force the removal of barbed wire in residential projects?
So that would be subject to abatement through either non-conforming use situations, which if you've got an existing legally established nonconformity, then really we, there's very, very little we would do to go about and go after that. If someone put something up that was not permitted, then yes, that is a nonconformity that we could pursue through our code compliance folks.
Okay, so the issue is whether they did it legally at the top?
Correct.
Okay, so even if it's in, so I think that, I think that particular example, it's not residential zoned, but how about if it's in a residentially zoned area?
Same thing, if it's, you know, it's a matter of whether it's.
If it was permitted at the time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Article 61, and that's on Page 26. And is this a change or a correction? This is from 12 to 24 months.
That's a change in the permit timeframe for approval, for staying valid, so it's a change.
Well, I guess I have the same question, was, did this come up before in a public hearing? Or how was that changed?
I would defer to the city planner on that one.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Maronis. So we've had a number of projects over the past several years that have not been able to obtain their building and/or grading permits within a 12-month period. I think that the complexities of development have become, have increased, thus making a 12-month deadline to obtain permits a little bit of a challenge for some projects. We feel that it's appropriate to give the applicants a little more time to work through those issues.
Okay, thank you. And then, 26. Article 63, transient lodging. And that, actually on the, on the next page, Page 4, you have some conversations, I mean some description of that, and that's this 15, the extra 15% you talked about in your presentation. So if they wanted, if the SRO wanted to go from 100% to 101%, they need to request a CUP?
So the 100% qualifier is meant for the type of unit being proposed. So in the hotel conversion ordinance, you can propose a mix of residential use types. So theoretically, someone could propose to convert a hotel to 50 multifamily units, traditional apartments, and then they could propose, you know, another X amount of SROs. Where the 100% qualifier is for project conversions that are 100% converting to SRO units.
So I guess what I meant was if they wanted to do 101% of the rooms?
Correct, so.
They would need a CUP.
The hotel conversion ordinance limits the amount of units for conversion to the amount of rooms in the hotel. So if some, if a project proponent wanted to increase the number of rooms within the hotel or units for the conversion, they would be unable to based on the hotel conversion ordinance as is. So for 100% SRO projects, where they have those limitations on maximum unit size and average as well, there could be the potential for dead space within the hotel. And so this language would allow for them to utilize the full existing floor area of the hotel.
I guess what I'm getting at is the only way for them to do that is through the CUP process?
Correct.
And then if we make them use the CUP process, we're going to cap it at 15%?
Correct.
If it's anything 0 to 15%, it needs a CUP, and 16% don't even apply?
Correct.
Has any thought been given into a different value than 100%? To do 10%, extra just by right? And a CUP if more than 10%? Or up to 15% by right and more than 15% by CUP?
Sure, so the language specifically for the increase is based on the initial approval and findings of the hotel conversion ordinance from 2021. The intent of that ordinance was to not intensify the existing hotel motel use when converting or transitioning to a residential use, which is why there's a limitation on existing units to proposed units. So because that ordinance went through an environmental review process based on that scope, this increase in potential units for 100% SRO would be through the discretionary process to enable that intensification, and the 15% threshold was a way, a quantifiable way to ensure that it's not an, if there is dead space within a hotel, they're not needing to expand the structure because they are limited based on the existing hotel conversion ordinance.
And so it goes back to what was reviewed for environmentally reviewed? And then the CUP provides an opportunity to look, to review that?
Correct.
Okay, so, so does that mean that if you wanted to do a bigger project, the person would do a mixed use and do an SRO and multi? And if you want to avoid the CUP process?
I'm not sure what you mean by a bigger project.
If, oh, if there was more space than 100% of the rooms, then the applicant could do a combination project and not have it be 100% SRO anymore, and he could use that extra space. You said, like, you gave an example of a 50-50 project, and the extra space would go to the larger units. Is that perceived as what someone would do? They don't want to go through the CUP process, then they just propose a mixed project?
Correct, or they could propose amenity space in that additional floor area. So think like common areas, recreational amenities like a gym or something of that nature.
So I guess, I think it's a shame that we didn't think about this before we did the environmental review. Okay, and I think maybe only one more. Last one is Article 70, accessory dwelling units, and that's Page 32. I really, I'm sorry, but I really don't understand what this is trying to say. And I guess if I struggle with figuring out what this says, I think other people might also. "The number of accessory dwelling units on legal lots with existing multifamily dwelling units," I mean even the introduction is confusing, "shall be permitted to construct at least one accessory dwelling unit within portions of existing multifamily dwelling structures that are existing non-habitable space and shall allow up to 25% of the units in each existing multifamily dwelling structure in accordance with the government code."
That's it?
Code. Okay, period. I don't, I don't know what that means. It seems really confusing, and this is, these Omnibus changes are to clarify and make things simpler, I think. Could you tell me what it means?
Sure.
Can we propose, can we, can we offer changes to it after we know what it means?
Yes, so this language is specifically for proposed dwelling units on multifamily lots with legal multifamily dwelling units. So this would be sites without single-family homes, this would be existing apartments. And so the language in 331473A3A is based on the updated ADU guidelines from HCD on the multifamily, ADUs on multifamily residential, existing multifamily units. So again, the underlined bold is the new addition of language, and a majority of that language is existing. In fact, the only thing that's added is within the portions of existing multifamily dwelling structures that are existing non-habitable space. So it's just qualifying the type of space that is existing, so the non-habitable as opposed to habitable space. And then the 25% is just being changed to comply with our AP Style Guide, which is the formatting the city uses in all of our technical writing.
Okay.
If the city planner has any additional information to add on that?
I was, excuse me, I would just state that the language comes, I believe, word for word from statute, from government code. So there, you know, we didn't want to make it any more confusing than it already could be, and I think pointing, you know, we could point you to that source or we could quote that source, either way. You know, it's cleanest, I think, to just reference it and specify exactly word for word, this is what it says, so.
Okay, okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
And then I suppose when, if an applicant was following up, they could certainly ask you for examples of that to try to clarify, I assume, right? I mean, that's kind of how that would play for a lot of these things, like, what are you talking about there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, though, that was helpful. Commissioner Spear?
Thank you, I have just a couple of questions. Scroll back here and I'll try to pick these out. Okay. This is just, this is really a minor thing, I just thought I'd point it out since I noticed it. Maybe I'm missing something, but Page 19, Section 33855, non-compliance. It just looks like it's missing something here as we strike community development. It's director of, nothing. So I don't know if we want to strike the word of and leave it as director, or qualify of what?
That should be struck out, so we can make that recommendation, include that in the, whatever motion.
Okay, right, that's just a minor thing. Next question I have is Article 49. I'm looking at, under Section 33951, condominium conversion application. Number one, it says here, you know, we'd be striking in the downtown specific plan, East Valley specific plan, South Center specific plan. Now, I think what this is doing, I think specifically before we were saying in our language that we went through an administrative process for those specific plan areas and not administrative for everything else, and now we're saying administrative for everything. Is that correct?
I believe the removal of those specific plans is just to make this portion of the code more ubiquitous across all aspects, all policy documents.
But did it not say that these specific plan areas, unless the action includes discretionary permits for which the Planning Commission City Council is? Does this not, does this not state that, that all of the reviews should be administrative process now? Not just those three? Not just those three or those three specific plan areas?
Page 22.
I'm going to read through this, one second.
Page 22, uh 339511.
Okay, I can actually speak to that, I believe. So in those locations, a um condominium permit was not required. It was an administrative process. The goal is to have that administrative process be citywide. Um so basically, we've removed those name or those locations from that first uh from from number one there, and then we've struck number two completely. So it basically means that everything falls into that administrative process identified in item one there.
So this particular is not a a a minor change, this is actually a change in the process?
It is a change in the process for the uh for condominium permits in other zones other than these locations, correct?
It's the rationale for changing the process.
So um in, when you develop a a condominium, when you're doing something that does not require planning commission or even does not require city council approval, so for instance, a four lot map, a parcel map, that would be looked at and deter and reviewed and approved ultimately by uh by the director. That if they were doing a if they were doing that as condominiums, it would automatically shoot it into a requirement to go, I believe, to city council, regardless of the fact that it's four lots or four units. If you were doing a 10-unit apartment building, that would be that well, let's say if you're doing a 10-lot subdivision, that'd be something that the planning commission would consider and approve. If you're doing a 10-unit condominium project, it'd be something that the that would require staff recommendation to planning commission and because of the condominium map itself or the condominium request, it would also require then city council approval. So basically, by putting a condominium permit on a project that might already require a tentative map, you're automatically triggering that let that extra level of review through city council. In the specific plan areas that had been identified, we had we had eliminated that requirement and this is a goal to uh to kind of create that same kind of streamlining that was done in those specific plans as they were adopted and updated.
Okay, as far as the rationale for doing that, though, I'm not too clear. I I mean, before we had in mind that we were going to go through that process, now we're saying.
It's really a streamlining process to to make it more efficient for a development to occur.
I understand streamlining, but there's a reason why we have two different processes, right? We don't want to streamline everything, we want discretionary review for some things.
Right, and you know, projects that still have, in whatever size they are, whether they're let's say, well, I guess let's step back and think about this. If we had a 20-unit apartment building, that's done through a staff review. If you have that same 20-unit building and it's got condominium map on it, then that goes all the way to city council. And that, you know, the the impacts of the project are the same one way or the other.
If they were not in one of those.
Correct, correct.
And if I might add, I know that affordable homeownership is a goal of the city council. And so by streamlining the condominium process, which generally and historically, until maybe recently, condominiums have traditionally been more a more affordable option, it aligns with that goal as well for streamlining that process.
Well, I I understand that they want they want it to happen, but that doesn't mean that they necessarily don't want to have review of it or that particular review of it, right? I I'm not sure what they have in mind, just because they want the conversion to happen doesn't mean they necessarily want that path to be a certain way. So I I I guess I'm questioning how we know that that's what's wanted here or or is it what's what's wanted? I don't, I as I'm thinking, I'm trying to think, well, is there a practical reason for having the review the way it's been? As opposed to stream, I mean, we could streamline everything, but we don't, there are certain things we don't want to streamline. There are certain things we want to go through that process. Is this one of them? That's what I'm trying to figure out, what's the rationale for saying, well, not this one or yes, this one? So I understand your 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 answer of streamlining, but but what other rationale can we have for that? And did you have something that you were thinking of saying?
That would be going beyond you asking staff questions.
Right now, we're just asking.
Of deliberating that subject or just asking for staff?
Yeah, I guess that's my that's my, I'm what I'm struggling with here is what is um what is the uh what is the rationale for, wha- what is the good idea here? Is there is there a need for discretionary review on this?
I think that the discretionary review for the project would occur regardless of there being a map. So if it was gonna or regardless of being there con there being a condominium, a project that would ultimately need to be pr need to um go through the planning commission because it's a tentative subdivision map for a 20-unit condominium project, you have that discretion and that is something that is brought forward to the planning commission. The condominium map is kind of um something that's tacked on and for there's not a ton of reason why um why that requires a separate review from the condom from the uh from the map itself. We can look at that all together and bring that all to the same decision-making body. So I guess the the flip side of it could be, well, do we want to require, do we want to send all maps to council instead of, you know, instead of only the ones that are involving a condominium permit? Right, so do we want to push every, you can say, okay, you've got a project that's got a map, you've got a project that's got a map and a and a uh and a condominium permit. This one requires city council, this one only requires planning commission. Do we want to not require city council for the CUP? I'm sorry, for the condominium permit? Or do we maybe want to require city council for the tentative map? It's it's what's the most efficient way to do that? And you know, it the review is going to be done by staff and through the decision-making body regardless. It's the question of does it does it really get to a level of needing uh city council review and determination on something that is generally more more or is is appropriately and and is able to be handled by staff or the commission here?
Back to, my next question is back to the barbed wire question. And this is um, let me see if I can reference the page, which is page 24. My question relating to this is that currently we have the RE uh nonprohibition against against barbed wire in residential estates. We have a continued non-restriction on agricultural use. I think, a- as I think about this, I think about people in residential estates that have chickens or have the same minor agricultural concerns that someone in an agricultural zone may have and may have the same reasons for wanting barbed wire. You know, he has chickens, whatever it is, he doesn't want the coyotes coming to eat his chickens. He has barbed wire up or he wants to have barbed wire up. And we're saying, no, we're going to wipe that out. So by the same rationale of saying, hey, there are certain agricultural concerns and we have in the past preserved those concerns for uh residential estates, I question whether there's a need to remove that prohibition from residential estates. That's my concern, is why why take it away? If there is a practical concern that is consistent with the existing allowance for agricultural purposes. Any thought on that? Any, I guess.
That would be, so if you're, are you seeking clarification on?
Yeah, is there, I I we struck it. And what's the reason why we struck it from residential estates?
Sure, um so really, the the RE zone has more i- is usually in a more developed area that's not as as rural, where you would expect to see uses such as, you know, farmland and animal husbandry. It is a permitted use, you are correct, in at at least a certain extent in the RE zone. But because of the location where you typically see RE zone properties and the densities that are around them, that's where the that's where you get that difference between something that's truly rural and something that maybe is semi uh is kind of semi-rural or bordering on suburban.
Understood, we we sometimes we try to make reasons why we should or shouldn't allow certain things. Sometimes I think we should say, if we don't have a really good reason, we should allow it. And I know of instances where individuals in the city do have barbed wire on residential properties for exactly those reasons. So I'm hesitant unless there was some, you know, there's some other reason where like, you know, legislation or recommendations by such and such or safety concerns that actually happened within our city boundaries. I don't think we have any of those three, do we?
It it's really neighborhood compatibility is where we're at with that.
Thank you.
And I would expect boiled down to safety as well.
Ultimately, a probab, I mean, you could you could see that if you've got an area where you've got a lot of pedestrians walking down the sidewalk and you've got barbed wire right next to it. Yeah, that that that's a potential.
But we don't have any particular instances where it's come up.
Not that I'm aware of.
And I think we do have a 20-foot setback from public streets for the barbed wire as well, which would mitigate safety concerns even if we had it, right?
As the as far as the proposed revisions, correct?
Right, right. Okay. Um I do have a question on Article 57 miscellaneous use restrictions. And here in section 331103, let me get to the page number, that is, page number 25. Striking conditional use permits for nursery, primary and secondary education permits as required by the underlying zoning designation. Does this also make a change to administrative review for something that was not before?
No, so the removal of the CUP language from this section is that in the respective zoning ordinance, whether that's residential, commercial, industrial, the permitted uses table ha has schools, nurseries called out as a use and then has the designation in the table. Not all of those zones required a CUP, so it was conflicting and actually adding confusion regarding whether a CUP was required on top of it if it was a permitted use in the table.
Okay, took a blanket away and went to the specific table?
Correct.
Understood, thank you. Question on the parking here, and this is referencing page 27. Number 11, parking, we struck by Article 39 in the zoning code unless modified herein. And then we strike A. We have this section where where we do list all of the parking. Yeah, I think it's in a table, is that right?
So just to clarify, page 27 is the hotel conversion ordinance and not the off-street parking ordinance? Did I misunderstand or mishear you on your initial?
I'm at number 11, parking.
Right, so this is the parking standards for the hotel conversion ordinance, which is what Article 63 is. Instead of referencing Article 39, which is the off-street parking, the parking standards are set in the ordinance itself.
Right, my question on that is, we have a, we have Article 39, which has a nice little place for everyone to go to parking requirements. And now we're pulling this out and we're saying, but the parking requirements for this, we're going to put in its specific little place. Why do that instead of when someone wants to know where parking is, they know right where to go and it's all in one place?
So this is a cleanup item. When the hotel conversion ordinance was written and adopted in 2021, the parking standards were adopted within the hotel conversion ordinance itself, but then it also made reference to Article 39 where those requirements were not listed, so it's cleanup.
It was already put in.
Correct.
Understood. Okay, thank you, that's all I have for questions.
Commissioner McCarroll, questions?
Just a curiosity question. On page 28, under I, the requirement for restricted lower-income ADUs or multifamily units, oh wait, actually, sorry, not that, that's not the right one. My question is, it says for lower-income multifamily units, only half of a parking space is required, but we require a full space for market-rate apartments? Is that correct? My only question is, why would we do that?
So just to clarify, the question is with regard to the ADU requirements for parking versus?
I might have.
You might have conflated the two.
Yeah, well, actually, no. Under B on that same page, it says the parking required for restricted group homes, quarters, SR units or multifamily dwelling units for lower-income households, that shall not exceed the half space per unit. And my my question is, is that only for lower income and not market-rate apartments? And then my question is, out out of curiosity, why is that?
Correct, so that is for restricted affordable units?
Yes.
And I would defer to the city planner who was here at the time this ordinance was written, if he knows what the impetus for that was. Probably an incentive.
Sure, so so um first I'll start by saying this isn't a change, this is something that was in there previously. But um the idea, I think, was that for uh uses that tend to typically have a lower demand for parking, um a lot of times you'll see affordable housing complexes have lower parking requirements and have less parking because the uh the residents typically don't always have vehicles. So it's a less, it's a lower demand based on the on the type of use that it is.
But it's also, in my experience, such a request from developers to ease up on parking for market-rate apartments. So just out of curiosity, why would it also not be an incentive for market-rate developers to not have to provide so much parking? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the the you're getting at, why? Why is it something that we would grant as an incentive for or a way for affordable proj projects to work, but not going to look at that for for market rate?
Yeah, for for someone who has to design units, you know, one to two bedrooms, and we run into those parking requirement issues and we have to work around those in ways. I'm just curious, it would, to me, it's the market rate is just as important as low income.
Sure, um I think that the, you know, market rate units, you're going to have the, well, I I can say that typically you wind up having the demand for parking more so than you do when you have a uh an affordable housing development. Um and to be able to provide the parking that's necessary for the for the area and for the site to not burden the on-street parking or other areas of the, you know, in the vicinity, that's where the need for for adequate parking is. And when you have adequate parking for an affordable project that may be a lower number, then adequate parking would be considered for a market-rate project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, clarifications for staff? No? Okay, I'll close the hearing. Is there any public comment related to the to the item at hand? Seeing none? So deliberation? Comments?
I have one comment. Thank you for the reduction in parking, up to 25%, especially for commercial zones. Businesses that want to come here, thank you. I'm so glad to see that.
So do you still have some concerns about the condominium thing?
About the condominium?
Yeah.
No. Well, if you, if you, if there's discussion to be had on it, I'm, I'm happy to hear what everyone else has to say about it. I'm just trying to think about it.
So, I, you know, I think that when the specific plans were developed, there was thought given to, we should streamline this. And it was put into the specific plans. I think there's probably people that still feel it should be streamlined, but not just in those specific plans, to be streamlined everywhere. And that, I mean, that's where they're, I didn't hear Adam exactly say it that way. But, but that, that's what, I think that's what he means, is those documents have been recently updated to make it that way, and now this makes the whole city, the whole city the same way as the newer plans state.
That's consistent. That is a consistent thought.
Right.
My question is, is, is there any, is there any need, I'm just trying to anticipate, is there any need that we would want to have discretion in that?
So I, I remember in the day that people wanted to make condominiums projects nicer. And I think, I, I think there was some, some idea that when we convert apartments to condominiums, we're removing some lower-income people from living there and we're, we're raising the bar. And now we're, we're pricing people out of their homes. And so there was a lot of condo conversions going on. And so they said, if you wanna, if you want a condo, you have to have washer and dryers. And you have to have this and you have to have that, that you didn't have, need in an apartment. And the city council kinda went off in this direction where they wanna approve condominium projects as a rent control measurement. And that's, I think, where, how it got in there a, a long time ago. And then over time, people saying, no, we, we need to streamline, we need to take these things out of the process and make the process easier, not make the process harder.
So in that, I, I see that. By the same token, we're anticipating a previous need for discretion and saying, we don't have that need anymore. We may have new needs for discretion. We may still want it for other reasons. And I'm just trying to anticipate what those might be before we kill it and say, yeah, let's just administrate this thing out. Make it really simple, make it really streamlined. But oh, in the future, we realize, oh, we're creating a lot of things that we look back now and say, ooh, maybe that was hasty. Maybe we should've had other concerns that we put discretion into to review or, or make recommendations on.
Right. But, but then we have two different processes depending on which, which area, town they're in.
I have deliberation on a, a little bit on another item. And that is, I, I'm, I, I would, I, I'm leaning towards recommending striking the removal of barbed wire for residential estates. I understand, well, I don't really understand because we haven't really had anything that spurred this. We haven't had people getting hurt from barbed wire. We haven't had any guidance, design documentation that says, this is a good idea, this is where everybody's going, now we should do this. We haven't had any code changes, anything like that. This is just someone's idea to strike something that people can do now and take it away. And I think we oughta try to avoid that if there's good reason not to.
So you said you have, you know people that live in rural estate areas and have barbed wire. Where, where in town is that?
Residential estates, in the southern end of Escondido, there are those that have chickens. And they have concerns and they, they put up barbed wire long ago to keep the coyotes out from eating their chickens. And it's a real concern people have.
So down by like the Lake Hodges area? Is that what you mean, down there?
Yep.
Okay. And so that's not a, a very urban area. See, when, when I see that, I see the opposite problem. I see that we're getting more and more urbanized and we're using barbed wire where we shouldn't, where we shouldn't be.
I understand that. That is a good concern. And I think that's, that's why we have some limitations in there for residential estates. If we look up the definition for residential estates, it is a more rural setting. It's where people say, hey, I wanna, I want a nice little country-like setting in my residential neighborhood where I can have chickens. And I'm not on the farm, but I have my own little backyard agricultural fun stuff, right? People have those concerns, they have those wants, they move to residential estate neighborhoods for those reasons. And I'm hesitant to just take that away from them.
Yeah, I might add, I know someone on Sixth Street who has barbed wire on the top of her chicken, chicken hutch, or whatever you call it.
On Sixth, is that, is that in the, in more of an urban area though? And is that, is that zoned?
I'm not exactly sure what zone it is. I assume it's in the urban, but anyway, I'm just saying that 'cause another example of current activity.
People in Escondido want it. We have allowed it in the past. They want it. I don't see any imminent need to restrict it. That's what I, that's why I'm asking, hey, have we had injury? Have we had guidance design documentation? Have we had code upgrades? Nothing like that has spurred this. We've just kind of came up with it.
Well, I, I, I think the urbanization of Escondido has spurred it. I mean, you, you might not have, you might not have heard that. But, but I brought up, and I could bring up more examples of where it's inappropriate. And maybe that's how people started to look at this. And, and what you're describing isn't inappropriate, but I think that's how it, it comes about. You say you don't know how it comes about. I, I think that's how it comes about. People looking at it in, in the, in the, an application where we shouldn't have barbed wire or razor wire. And then they start looking at the rules and they wanna change the rules instead of enforcing the existing rules.
I think you're right. I think there, there exist different pushes.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And so, so I, I can agree to not change the rules, but to then just enforce the rules. And, and not have them where it's not appropriate. Because, right, I hate to put a rule someplace and inadvertently affect somebody who we never meant, we never meant to impact, right?
Great. Yeah.
All right. So, so therefore you would support with potentially an amendment?
Amendment to strike the residential estate prohibition change on barbed wire.
May I just ask, is barbed wire, is razor wire considered barbed wire as well?
Yeah, I don't have the definition in front of me, but, you know, we look at, it's in any residential zoning district, barbed wire, razor wire, or other similar fences with a fixed instrument, sharp instruments. So we look at those all in the same manner.
Right. And that, that led me to ask about, is it, was it, was it allowed in those areas before? And, and I think, I heard it was allowed there, right?
In the resident, are you talking about the location you were asking about earlier or in these other RE zones?
No, in the, the REs.
Correct.
It is allowed, it is allowed there.
Correct. I mean, if you were to look at and, and keep the struck text and not add any of the, underline, that's what it would read today. That is what it reads today.
And it was correct.
Correct.
So, yeah, I, I would support that.
So that would be the amendment. Okay. Connie, Commissioner McCarroll, do you have any other questions or comments on this? No? Not at this time. Okay. So do you wanna make a motion?
My motion is to, maybe it's as bold of me to assume there are no other changes.
They can just give it a shot?
My motion is to approve the changes as mentioned, with the exception of striking residential estate prohibition for barbed wire.
Okay. Second?
I would second that.
Chair Barbe?
I, I approve.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Approve.
And Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
The vote is four to zero to approve. Great. Thank you all. So now we go on to current business. Current business, PL 23-0004, development process overview. Welcome back, Commissioner Wyler.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Barbe. So we've got a presentation that is going to be provided by members of our planning, building, and engineering staff that's going to really go over the development process as a whole. What's it take from the time someone has an idea till the time they've got their keys in hand and are moving in? So with us today, we've got Jay Paul and Jason Christman from Planning and Engineering, who you've had, had the pleasure of meeting before. Doug Moody, our building official. And then Levana Kurekki, our deputy fire marshal is here as well for questions as we go through the process. So Jay's gonna kick this off, but if you have questions as he's going through things or as Jason or Doug are as well, feel free to, to interrupt him, ask him questions. We're here to just basically provide this educational experience for you guys, so.
We appreciate that.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm gonna go through each slide fairly quickly. However, anytime you wanna stop and ask a question, go ahead. I'm gonna stay at a, a very 30,000-foot level. And if you want me to come down lower, just ask a question. And we have staff members to answer any of the specifics as detailed as you would like. However, from the process standpoint, typical projects have four phases. And it starts up with the, before they even get a project in and submit a project, it's the pre-application phase, the due diligence phase. And then there's the entitlement process, when they actually submit a project and it goes through all the department reviews and eventually gets approved at the staff level, comes to planning commission or city council. After that is the post-entitlement phase where construction, real construction drawings are submitted and go through the process. And then after that, you get out in the field and they start building what they were approved to do. Here is a kind of a flow chart, and I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, that kind of explains the four-phase process from the pre-application process, entitlement, post-entitlement, and construction phase. So typically, everything begins and ends in planning. When you come in for a project, you'll get a project planner assigned to you and they'll have your project from cradle to grave. And we'll get, put together a development team consisting of the various departments that would get involved in a project. Engineering, building, fire, utilities, traffic, sometimes the, the police department will get involved, and field engineering. And we'll go through those in an departmental, working as a team through the pre-application, the entitlement, the post-entitlement, and then into the construction phase. All working together, sometimes we'll branch off and then come back together again to get that final turnkey project. The, I like to start with the very first one. Let me go back. We have the pre-application, entitlement, post-entitlement, and I'll now go through a little bit what that entails. So this, the pre-application process, a developer, a homeowner comes to us and a lot of times they say, what can I do with my property? Or what are the development standards? And they're doing their due diligence. And we take them through the code compliance. What would need to be submitted? What would be the density? Can I do this on my property? Can't I do this on my property? What do I need to know to submit? What, what are project killers? And we'll sit down with them with one staff member. We may have to bring in engineering. Sometimes we, they'll submit preliminary plans to us, and they can do that digitally now. We'll route it around, get a case number. We'll stay at that kind of 30,000-foot level with them and provide the, the basics for them. After that, they'll maybe come back with some more detailed concept designs and they'll submit those to that, to us. We can take it to our staff development committee. Staff development committee is made up of all of our development departments. A manager's office, code enforcement, building, fire, utilities, traffic. It's a standing meeting every Tuesday. We bring projects like this where everybody can take a look at, at that higher level and look at what are the code compliance requirements? What should the applicant be looking at and aware of? What things should they not do? And we'll provide that information back to them. They'll go back and more fully develop those concept plans. At that point, they can submit a, a project or they can have more additional meetings. Pre-application means where we can sit down and go through those pre-application comments we provided to them. So when they do go to the next step, they have a complete submit. And the more work you can do upfront with the applicant or a property owner, the quicker and more efficiently it'll go through the process, save some time and money. And time is money as you're working through projects. So the next day is, oh.
Excuse me, Jay, sorry. Go back one slide if you could. On the staff development committee review, is, is that written comments that come from staff or is that a verbal sit-down with the applicant, property owner?
It, it's two different processes. Right now, a staff development committee, we will bring certain projects to them, to staff development, put it up on a, a big screen. And everybody will kind of, you know, give their two cents. And we'll provide some written or verbal comments to the applicant. They also have an opportunity to come back if they want to and sit with the full staff development committee after we've gone through that. And we will schedule a meeting, whether it needs to be with a full staff development committee or a subset of, and not have the full committee review of that project.
Are you finding property owners, applicants utilizing this process more and more?
I think some of them do with the more complicated projects. Sometimes they, they wanna do a meet and greet too and know all the parties that would involve and present that to the staff development committee. That way we have the fire marshal there. And I don't have to set a separate meeting for that. They're always available. Some do, some are ready to go before that. Some want a subset of that and just meet with two or three staff members because they only have very specific questions, but they don't need the whole group to do that.
So from staff's perspective, are you finding this a valuable exercise for applicants?
I think it's working very well to help them navigate through the process. Some are, are real pros at it and some aren't. Cities are different and their processes are different. So we'll take them through how you can get through that process and what you need to submit and don't need to focus on.
Okay. Thank you.
How typical is that? I mean, that's great. It's fantastic. Is that fairly typical that cities do that or are we kinda unique?
I, I think cities are doing that more. We have refined the process over the years, especially with the staff development committee over the last, you know, several years, getting all the groups together. Not only do we talk about projects, but we talk about project process or status. What's coming due? Who needs to review things? When are our project reviews and, and plan reviews coming up in, in the process? What needs to be focused on now and what can wait till next week to keep projects moving through the process?
So that happens where you have all departments there?
Every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday. Okay. And so the public needs to kind of rush to get in before that meeting, I guess, is what the?
Well, what happens, they'll make an appointment. Maybe once a month, you might have an applicant want to do that, come in. It, it's not very often where they come and meet the, the entire staff development committee because usually we can, you know, pull off other members and have a separate meeting, whether that's a Zoom meeting or, or in person.
So, and if I can maybe expand on it a little bit, I think that the pre-application meeting itself is something that a lot of jurisdictions do. The, the way we've set it up and organized it, even our application materials, et cetera, for it is, is modeled after another jurisdiction that, and actually the one jurisdiction that I knew of where I used to work. And then one of my staff members also brought me some paperwork from where he used to work and it was virtually identical. So someone created this process in some jurisdiction at some point and everyone's utilizing it. So that process is fairly, fairly common. The SDC process, the staff development committee, that meeting, that's an internal staff meeting between all of these departments. That's not something that I believe is that common. I think it's becoming more so. But it's something that I was actually very impressed with when I got here, that we've got a, a meeting every week with all the development-related disciplines in attendance so that we can look at whatever projects might be, whatever issues we might have on projects or, you know, that we basically put them in front of the group to vet or talk through things. You'd be, you'd be amazed how many times Jay and Jason are talking about an issue on, you know, on a site planning thing and, and Levana comes up with some idea that they, they hadn't thought about. Just because when you have that many diverse, that many diverse minds in the room, you'll, you'll come up with things that people aren't seeing and you'll come up with solutions that might not have been apparent to someone who's, you know, who's neck-deep in it, so.
And is this the same, we submit for completeness review before we actually do our submittal packages with the City of San Diego for some of the projects that I work on? So is the completeness review kind of what you're saying where you guys look at our package, let us know what's missing from our, you know, overall thing? So when we- our package, let us know what's missing from our, you know, overall thing, so when we do the official submittal, we have all of our ducks in a row? Is that similar?
That's part of the process. One of the things we do is talk about the process, the application, the fees, what is needed for that. Because the application, if you just look at the application, it'll last for a lot of things, and some things, sometimes you don't need all those, but you need to focus on other things. So we want to have healthy applicant submit a complete application, and it cuts down on the review cycles.
Right.
Also.
So what?
Equivalent, roughly.
Yeah. It sounds like it is, but I've never known it from the backend, just known it as submitting for that completeness review. So I was curious, what, if that was...
It's part of it. We can do that also. Our system now is electronic. We have electronic software system to review.
Everyone is, pretty much.
Is doing that, and it's digital. So it's got its pros and cons, because how the process used to work before, you had to come in and do it at the counter. And before we would take in that, that process, you had to have all, pretty much 99% of your, all your things submitted. The electronic process allows the applicant to submit things electronically, and we'll start the process, and by using the pre-application process, we can avoid a lot of incomplete applications by using that electronic submittal process.
Yeah, I'm a fan. It's much quicker.
Well, once you get through that, and you make your formal submittal, that's usually done digitally, and we create a project number, and we'll select the various departments that need to review that, and we will route those plans around. It'll also to outside agencies at that time, and through the pre-application process and this process, we'll evaluate it for environmental compliance. At the same time, the project is going through its initial round of detailed review by the various departments here. And at that time, too, we may or may not schedule a neighborhood meeting. Depends on the complexity of the project. Not all projects need neighborhood meetings, not all are controversial. Some are. The one you saw just previous, North Iris, and Conway had neighborhood meetings, because you could see the amount of public input that was necessary for that. So the project will be sent to the departments. It may go through several review cycles. We try to cut down on those through the pre-application process with them. We'll provide comments back to the applicant, and they will respond back through as many review cycles as it takes to get them ready for their next stage in the process. I just want to briefly go through the environmental review process in SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. All projects are subject to SEQA, environmental review. Now, SEQA is not, doesn't recommend approval or denial of a project. It's an informational process and document-only to evaluate what the direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts a project will have on the physical environment. And projects are subject to basically three different categories or review. They can be exempt or through categorically exempt or statutorily exempt from SEQA. They don't, they fit in a certain category, they don't have an impact, they move forward. If they do have a impact, we may have to, or the applicant's consultants prepare a negative declaration or mitigated. Now, negative declaration doesn't mean it's bad. It just means that the project doesn't have a significant impact on the environment. If it does, then they have to prepare an environmental impact report. Now, what the environmental document does, it identifies what those impacts are, how to avoid them, how to reduce them, or mitigation measures to reduce the impacts to less than a significant level. Those are then presented to the approval body and included in the project conditions of approval. Once you get towards the end of that entitlement process...
Jay, real quick, if I could just, if I could just say one thing. Over the years, we've provided a SEQA 101 presentation to this body. There are several new members on the commission, so I anticipate the coming months we'll be presenting that type of information again, so.
Towards the end of that entitlement process, we complete all the review cycles, finalize the plans, develop conditions of approval, mitigation measures, make final environmental determinations, and findings of fact for approval or denial of a project. That gets us to the last stage of the entitlement process. For the administrative projects, apartment complexes, some commercial projects, we'll issue a conditional letter of approval to the applicant that is appealable to zoning administrator or the Planning Commission. Projects that require discretionary views, conditional use permits, tentative maps, planned developments, those will go on to the Planning Commission through a public hearing process. Part of that process is sending out mailings to property owners within 500 feet as a minimum, noticing the newspaper, and posting large signs on the site. Staff will prepare a staff report, all supporting documents, resolutions of the project. You'll get the final environmental document to adopt or certify, and/or make a recommendation to the City Council where legislative acts are required and has to take on in the next step. Once that is done, and Planning Commission makes a recommendation, we will schedule a City Council hearing, and it goes through the same process, the public notification process. We prepare staff report, a recommendation from the Planning Commission, and all supporting documents, and have a public hearing on the process. Should the project be successful, it moves on to stage three, which is the post-entitlement, and I like to say that's where the rubber really meets the road, where you really have to submit construction documents, and for that, there are two, it branches off from planning and goes through engineering and building, and coming all back to the end. And I will hand it over to Jason Christman to help you through, or talk you through, the engineering process post-entitlement.
Good evening, Commissioners. So as Jay was saying, this is the post-entitlement process, where they're coming then to the Engineering Department and Building Department to attain the permits that they need to do their construction. So in the pre-entitlement process, the planning group is kind of the hub that all the departments feed into with comments and things like that. So then, in the post-development process, the engineering group kind of becomes that hub, where applicants then submit their grading plans, improvement plans, any of their technical studies, like their geotech reports, drainage studies, their stormwater quality management plans. They submit that all to our group, and then we distribute it once again to those other departments, like traffic, planning, fire, and utilities. And then those departments are reviewing what's submitted, providing us comments, and then we're creating a letter and a redlined set of plans that then is submitted back to the applicant, back to the engineer, with all our comments and concerns. We're looking at, you know, all of our ordinances, all of our standards, and any, you know, regional standards that they might need to be compatible with. And they go through, we usually go through that process about three times. So we'll take in a submittal, make comments, they'll go try and fix everything, provide us with what we're asking for, resubmit, and then we take a second look at it. And hopefully, by that third review cycle, there are very few comments left and very few issues left that aren't resolved. And so that is primarily what our group does, and at the end of that process, we would then be able to issue a grading permit and issue their, you know, encroachment or right-of-way permits to do work out in the street. Also, part of our process is attaining bonds from the project that protect the city. If, you know, if something happens to the project and they can't complete it, then we have a bonding company that's standing behind that developer. You know, that's a rare occurrence, but, you know, we have those kind of redundancies kind of in place. And then they're also paying all their fees, giving us any of the deposits that are necessary. And then, consistent with that process, they can also be going through a similar process with Doug and his group on the building side. So, you know, he can speak a little bit about what he's looking for, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug. I have it on, sure.
Here we go. We're going to start all over again. We start all over again. We resubmit the plans, and building routes it to everybody. We send them back out. And for the building department, we also use a third-party consultant to do a lot of our plan reviews. For more complex projects that require engineering studies. The building department then reviews those to the current building standards. This code's just changed January 1st to the 2022 California Building Code, so they'll review those to those standards. Once all the reviews have been done by all the reviewing divisions, like planning, engineering, and fire, they'll notify us that the plans are approved, and at that point, we will calculate all of the appropriate fees, both issuance fees for planning, fire, and building, and impact fees for traffic, wastewater connections, water connections, facilities fees, park fees. And then we'll have the applicant pay all those fees, and once they've completed paying all those fees, we'll then combine all those plans to create an approved plan set, stamp those plans for the applicant, and then we'll issue the permit.
Right.
So. And I apologize for what's going on with the, with the video here. Unintentional, completely, and we're working on it.
Something's coming through here. So, once that's done, they'll move into the final stage, and they've got their permits issued from Engineering and from the Building Department. That's when they go out in the field and start construction. So I'm going to hand it back over to Engineering and let Building finish this out for the construction phase, and there's two components to that. Let Engineering describe what happens during that phase.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. So, once we issue the permit, then they're out in the field. They go into our, we call it our Field Engineering Division, where our inspectors are then out on the project on a consistent basis, meeting with their superintendent, you know, what do you have going on? Are you building a sewer line today? And then there, as part of that process, they're inspecting the work as the contractor goes along. And those, those activities keep going until they have a pad that's ready to be built upon. And when that happens, we require them to have a soils compaction report, which is basically just a report stating that a geotech engineer has been on-site, they've been monitoring the fill, the, where the building's going is, is on a, you know, a suitable foundation for what's going to be put there. And then they also, we also require a certification from a surveyor at that point to certify the elevation of the pad, so that it's within what planning approved way back in the pre-entitlement process.
And I believe once that pad certification, then they can start putting sticks in the air, and I'll hand that over to Doug to explain that process.
But what's the contractor has received approval from the Engineering Department to begin to construct. They will then call for periodic inspections from the Building Department to come out and review the foundation, underground plumbing, framing, electrical, mechanical, all the way through the final process, and will come out and then do a final inspection, and then issue them a certificate of occupancy after flying.
Right. And there's one final process to that, where Engineering will file a notice of completion and release all the bonds. Some projects require notice of completion to be done at, for maps at the council level. Others, they file a notice of completion, and that's when you can get all your bonds and securities released for your project. That concludes Staff's presentation, and are here for any questions you might ask. Beside the C coming in.
Commissioner Paul.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions. One is about grading, and there seems to be multiple inspections or multiple steps involved in grading. And I give an example of installing a swimming pool, and it seemed like the city wanted to inspect the grade. Let's say, let's say you needed to cut or something in the hillside to put a pool in, the city wanted to inspect that grade where the elevation of the pool was going to be. But then the contractor has to come back and, and remove the dirt to put the pool in. Is that still an existing process? Is that, does city staff direct that there's, the two events take place, or is that the contractor doing that on their own?
I'll do my best with that one, but for pools, typically, it's a building permit that they're receiving, and when they come in, the Building Department is routing it to our Engineering Group to kind of look at some of those grading things that you're bringing up. But the permit is issued by building, and we don't necessarily control how the work is done out in the field. We're there inspecting it as they go. I don't know if you have anything to add, Doug, but...
Normally, the process...
You had your mic on? Maybe you do. Okay.
Normally, the process for a swimming pool is, we would route it to the Engineering Department to determine if the location of the pool is in normally a setback or utility easement or something that would affect the construction of the pool. Where there is an ascending or descending grade, that condition actually affects the construction of the pool shell, and it requires a certain setback from the view of the ascending or descending grade in order to build that pool. We try to catch those things as quickly as we possibly can, so that you're not in a situation where you're building this pool, and you're looking five feet away, you have a slope that descends, and now we're telling you, oh, you have to put additional steel in the shell of the pool in order to retain the water without having it fall away. So that's, that's why we really want to try to catch that as quickly as possible. Hopefully, a good pool contractor, when he's coming out and looking at your site, he'll determine where he thinks he needs to be able to locate that pool where it will have the least effect to ascending and descending slopes.
Okay. So I have an example where I was told that, you know, that there had to be a cut to create the flat pad for the pool, and that the city had to approve that grade, and then the contractor had to come back. I mean, they have to move earth, take earth movers in to make the pad, and then they have to bring the earth movers back to dig the hole. And it seemed like, kind of, it seemed kind of silly. But I didn't know if that, if the build, you know, the person was telling me this, is telling me the truth or not, or, you know, or whatever.
We just wanted to see how much dirt that needed to be moved, with determining whether a grading permit would be required or not. So depending on the quantity of dirt, we can determine that.
Okay. And then I had another question related to, you're talking about the Tuesday meeting. So I live near La Honda and El Norte, where there's some construction going on, and every, there's a traffic signal out there about the lanes, lanes being closed, and every month, it just gets new set of dates. And I don't under, I don't really understand that, that it'll say the project's going to be finished September 30th, and then the next month, it's going to be, you know, the start date and end date are just another, another month away. And I'm sure if I go out there now, it says it's going to be finished in January. And if you're having a meeting every Tuesday, are you, every Tuesday, is that, is that project coming back to you guys? As, because it's like so late or something?
So in a project like that, I'm assuming that's a CIP project, road project, and that's something that's dealt with through our, through a different branch of the Engineering Division. That's our Capital Improvement Program team. So it's not, they're actually not involved directly with the, with our Tuesday Staff Development Committee meeting. That is something, though, we can definitely follow up with that team and get you some info on, and, you know, why, why not just put March or something, right? Is that the idea?
Right. We keep thinking the project's gonna be done this month and.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, if you wanna let me know afterwards what the project is, we can shop, we can get you a little bit of clarity and then look at that as a policy.
They had the, the gas line come through and go up La Honda and at the same time, they're redoing the storm drain.
And is that.
It's going, they're both, both projects went through the same intersection and they tried to do it at the same time and.
That's probably why it's one month.
One of them is finished and the other one, the other one is still there.
Yeah, and then that, that probably is coordination between the two project management teams as far as, okay, we've got our sign up because we know it's gonna take us till this point and then the next team's like, wait, we still have to, you know, and then they put that up and it, it just requires, I think, a little bit more coordination on the construction team, but we can talk to who it is out there and are, are both those projects still done? Are they complete?
I think the gas line project is, is complete.
That's what I thought.
But, but the, the storm drain is, is, is still, is still going on.
Okay.
So, okay, so that's a slightly different process. So now on El Norte by Broadway, we're building the Habitat for Humanity project and that is the entitlement process, right? Cause I, I'm worried that we're gonna, the same thing's happening there where every day they're closing one lane of El Norte for construction, but it doesn't seem like they're closing it for construction in the road. It seems like they're closing it because there's no pla, there's, there's no room on the site. And I'm wondering, are they gonna close that lane in El Norte every day for the duration of the project?
I think, yeah, I'm not very familiar with that project, but one thing that is happening out there is, you know, they, in order to have that closure, they submitted an encroachment permit. And then that permit had traffic control associated with it and it was approved more through our field engineering group. As far as, you know, why they're consistently, you know, closing that lane, you're probably right, it's a space issue or, you know, maybe when they finish that area, they could open that up more consistently or keep it open. But, you know, that's another question that would probably be better answered by like our field engineering group, which isn't here at the moment.
Cause I see they, we did the same thing on Grand behind Walmart. There was a apartment building on the top of the hill and we closed, closed that road in front of it every day for three, for three years. And, and I just don't want to see the same thing happening on, on El Norte every, every day for, for years. Thank you guys for your presentation tonight.
I just have one question for fire. Recognizing that probably through the pre-application process and entitlement process, you're, you're addressing issues of if it's a development project that, you know, in terms of turnarounds, et cetera, all that kinda thing, but what about if it's in the somewhat semi-rural area in terms of fire risk and evacuation routes and all of that? When does all of that come into play?
Good question. So, the state fire code and then also our standards state that if it's in the high or very high fire severity zone, we require what's called a fire protection plan, which is something that we ask for in the very beginning. So in the planning stages, that would be part of the 30,000 that Jay was talking about, that's a high-level thing where we would ask them upfront, let them know, we're gonna, we're gonna request this report and part of that report is turnarounds, access water and providing evacuation and secondary access is, is all part of that package. And so it's addressed at the planning stages and then we continue throughout, you know, if they do need evacuation routes and things like that, we continue throughout the process with that.
Work with them. So California just recently updated their fire maps, is my understanding or, or at least as far as general regions? And I'm just curious, is there gonna be a municipal rendering of, you know, your take on it, so to speak, and how that impacts your standards and your ordinances, et cetera?
They currently have the SRA, which is State Responsibility Area Severity Maps, out for comment and review. The LRA, which is the local areas.
Right.
It has not been released yet.
Oh, it hasn't been, okay.
They're talking, the state is talking of an early, or sorry, a late spring, early summer release for our review and comment. And then, once it gets approved at the state level, we have 180 days to do an ordinance on our level.
And when it's a local, local assessment, that's by jurisdiction, by city, by all the different cities or?
Yes, so they do it for, they do the LRA for the whole state, so, so it's specific to local jurisdictions, but within the whole state.
Okay. Thank you. Your mic is not on.
Yeah, just to add what, what, Lavanna, in a kind of a real world situation, several weeks ago, we had a, a project come in for pre-planning review and SDC looked at it. So, one thing they wanna know right off the bat from Lavanna is, do I have to have, there's no such thing as emergency access anymore, it's secondary access required. But they also wanna know, what's my minimum fire flow? And can we attain that? Fire flow? For the, the type of, whether it's commercial or residential and that's where utilities will help. At the time, they'll say, I only have a six-inch line in the road. So, they wanna know, do I have to upgrade to an eight-inch right off the bat or 12-inch? Cause, you know, what's this gonna cost me? Is that road too long and I need a, a fire turnaround on, on that? And then do I have to have another hydrant on site to meet that fire flow? And they can get that information before they even submit their project, so they start designing for that or around those things. So that's where that, that fire utility input comes in really handy right up front.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Wiley.
So after the entitlement process is completed and, you know, the applicant is in the, you know, engineering building stage, what is staff finding, because that's, that's critical in order to get to the point where we're putting sticks in the ground. What is staff finding that the best applicants do that helps speed that process along?
You know what? The difference between, let's say, 20 years ago and 10 years ago and five years ago was when stormwater and the fire code started to become a lot more stringent. And a tentative map isn't really a tentative map anymore when you look at that. They have to come in with a lot more finely engineered plans rather than working it out in the post-entitlement phase and then having to go back to planning commission or redesign a project because you didn't figure out that the, the sewer was too shallow or some other grading didn't work or you couldn't get utilities to work. Now, because of the stormwater requirements, you are designing to a high level in that entitlement process. So it makes the post-review a lot better now because all those issues were not left to, you know, the later stage. It's, it's designed up front and the issues are known up front now. So, it's come a long way over the last couple of decades.
In other words, it's, it's better to do a lot of this engineering on the front side versus the backside for that very reason you're discovering ahead of time issues.
Right, you're vetting all those, those real, you know, the devil's in the details and sometimes the details at the, at the end can, can really be a problem.
Oh, yeah. No doubt. Are you finding that most applicants are receptive to that? I mean, especially the guys that have been around for a long, long time and going, gee whiz, you're making me design this to the nth degree.
I think they appreciate it because the, the work done up front saves a lot of headaches at the tail end.
Okay. Well, I agree, quite frankly. So, thanks.
I'm sorry, I had another question I just thought about. So, so in the area that I live in, I don't know where there's any fire hydrants and we're still building new houses and I think they're all coming with sprinkler systems. So are we getting away from putting fire hydrants on this, on the sidewalks because of that or am I just not noticing the fire hydrants?
We're putting them in camo now so you can't find them. I'm kidding. No, we're still putting in fire hydrants. They, we still use them for fire operations. Fire sprinklers are proactive and fire hydrants are reactive. So we have both.
Just don't, I just don't notice them.
They're in camo for reals.
Look for the little blue dots in the road, the, the reflectors, that's where the fire hydrants are.
Oh, is that what those are?
Yep.
Okay. They really are in camo.
It's so we can find them in the dark. It's real.
I have a question regarding, I often talk to people in other jurisdictions that say, hey, they have an issue where they need appeal and whether it's design or construction issues and they're having a, you know, head-to-head and not seeing eyes with, with the jurisdiction. And I'm not sure that all jurisdictions take advantage of what we have, the Building Advisory and Appeals Board that provides that opportunity. Now, we don't really use it. So my question, and when I say we, I mean the city, by and large, doesn't take advantage of that opportunity. I think it's a great opportunity. I wonder, actually, I don't wonder, I believe that the public by and large is not very aware of the opportunity used by building advisory and appeals process. What do we do as a city to help educate folks so they actually know that they have that as an option?
I'd have to defer to Doug regarding that.
Actually, on our building webpage, in our list of handouts, it says that there is a building appeals board. On the, the city webpage also lists, I think we're the number one or number two board listed. We do a lot to, I do a lot to try to avoid having to go to a building appeals board. Usually doesn't go well for me if we do. But that information is available, everywhere available on our webpage and on the city's page.
Okay, so there are two places really. One is the webpage and the other is they go and look at the boards and, boards and commissions and they see it there. Okay. Nothing formalized in terms of when you get your permit, we point it out to you type of thing, I assume?
No, we don't actually invite you to argue with us.
I can understand that.
We usually don't.
And we also have on there alternate methods of means of compliance. If you find that your buddy heads over something, I'm always open to an alternate method, an alternate means that we think to consider to try to close that.
Any other questions? Okay.
I have one last one if I can. What about the historic review process in the city of Escondido? We have a historic preservation committee. I'm just curious, it used to be much stronger than I believe it is today in the sense that everyone knew who the historic preservation guy was. I can't remember his name, but I'm just, I can't remember his name right now, yeah. But, you know, in my neighborhood, I live in Old Escondido, so we're constantly, you know, concerned with what happens in our neighborhood as far as historic design guidelines, et cetera. So I guess my question is just how educated is our historic preservation committee these days? And if there is a conflict in what someone is asking to build, plan, do even on our downtown, you know, Grand Avenue street, what's the process there if, if there's a historic concern?
Um, well, I'll try to answer some of that and I'll take you through an actual project.
Perfect.
That we did. So, as part of the entitlement process and the sequa process, we have Article 40, which is our historic resource ordinance and we also have Environmental Quality Act and the State Department of Historic Resources guidelines. So, when we did the, the downtown theater project, and, and that was a good one because you were tearing down a significant, you're altering, tearing down and modifying a significant historic resource. And that required certain review by the Historic Preservation Commission, who was a advisory body to the city, city council. And so that project, from a sequa standpoint, had to follow certain procedures for mitigation and also had to get recommendations on, on the secret review process and the design process for the Historic Preservation Commission so they could make a recommendation ultim, to planning commission and ultimately to city council. That was one where the applicant, perhaps staff and the design review board were on different pages. So, ultimately, the, the Historic Preservation Commission made a recommendation and moved it, moved it for, went to two or three review cycles through that, went to planning commission. I, I think it actually went to city council with that cause it went through a BEZ process because it came to a point where it was a stalemate with that. So all those recommendations went to the, the city council, which is actually the final approval body and they took everybody's, you know, recommendations into consideration and ultimately, that was the project. They had preserved the theater, but tore down the companion building and built the new building. So that's how that, that, that process worked. But it had certain procedures, you know, procedurally and state and sequa that it did have to follow through that.
Thank you. It's a great project.
Yes.
It turned out beautiful. I'm happy with it.
All right. Anything else on this item? Okay.
I want to say thank you very much for that presentation.
And thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate your, we all need to be more educated, so it's really helpful. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to current business item PL 22-0010, 2022 General Plan Amendment, Community Protection, safety, the safety element essentially, update and creation of the environmental justice element. Ms. Maroney is logged in.
All right. Good evening once again. Bear with me as I get this going. It's a bit of a different presentation format. All right. So this item before you this evening is a debrief, a review of the 2022 General Plan Amendments outreach and engagement efforts that took place during 2021. And as you'll note, we're utilizing a little bit of a different presentation software this evening in order to give you the same experience that our city residents and stakeholders were exposed to during the outreach process. And we'll, we'll kinda get into that in a little bit. So just starting off with some background, this work effort, the 2022 General Plan Amendment is the update to the city's protection, community protection chapter, which serves as the city's safety element and the retooling of the community health and services chapter to an environmental justice element. And this was all required as a result of the city's update to the housing element that has been underway since 2020. And this specific work effort to update the safety element and create a new environmental justice element kicked off in December of 2021. So in February of 2021, staff presented to planning commission a draft community outreach and engagement program for this work effort. Tonight's update focus focuses primarily on outreach and engagement efforts and their results for this work effort. So for more information on any of the methods for engagement, this draft plan is available on the city's webpage in both English and Spanish. So for the purposes of tonight, the outreach and engagement efforts are grouped into four specific categories. The first is organized project meetings and these are really just meetings that were organized specifically for this 2022 General Plan work effort. So staff held a total of four organized project meetings. Two of them were in April of 2022. These were organized stakeholder roundtable meetings. And then in August of 2022, we held two at-large workshops that were open to the general public. Information on these two types of meetings can be found, again, in the draft outreach and engagement plan. And across those four meetings, we had a total of 42 individuals in attendance and translation services were offered at three out of four of those meetings and utilized at one of those meetings. The second type of meeting is a community meeting or community venue and these are meetings or opportunities that were organized and held by outside entities, typically third parties like nonprofits or community-based organizations that provided staff with an opportunity to present and conduct activities for the 2022 General Plan Amendment. So these efforts yielded captive audiences for discussions, things like presentations in front of Escondido Together, which is a religious organization that has a focus on environmental justice within the city of Escondido. The third type of event was just general community events. So these are regularly scheduled programming throughout the city, typically again by outside entities. That staff was presented an opportunity. the city, typically, again, by outside entities. That staff was presented an opportunity to table, so a little bit more of a passive role. These events included potential interaction with folks in attendance, but it didn't guarantee a captive audience, right? So these are folks who are just moving. They're there for other reasons, think Cruising Grand, Escondido Pride, National Night Out, where it required a bit of engagement. It was a lot more limited time to engage with folks. So in the events attended, these community events, staff interacted with a total of five hundred and seventy-seven individuals, two hundred and twelve through city activities, like an activity board, and the remaining receiving verbal or written information. So either we had some discussion at that event, or we provided some paper flyer to that person in passing, they expressed interest and took it. We had translation services at events based on city staff, bilingual staff availability, so not every event had a translator available. And then finally, we had print outreach. So this includes opportunities to disseminate just written information through a large venue. So Commissioner Barber, who's not here, he provided a write-up in the Times Advocate on the environmental justice element, and we also advertised within the Spring and Summer Recreation Guide. We had, I believe, a quarter page or a half-page ad discussing the work effort, and had a QR code that linked to the webpage to find out more information. So this is the opportunity where if you would like to interact with the presentation, to get a little bit of a sense of what community members experienced, you can take out your smartphone, or, I'm not sure, do you have web browsers on your machines? You can open up a tab and go to this webpage, or you can scan the QR code, and you'll be able to interact with the presentation. And it's really meant to just give you an idea of how we've been trying to engage with folks, both virtually and in person, utilizing some technology, but also, in those instances, we've provided hard copy of everything we've asked, so that folks who maybe don't feel comfortable utilizing technology had alternative options. All right, so the first question that we ask folks when we engage with them is how familiar are you with general plan documents? And so you can click on the answer and then hit submit. Look at that, very familiar. I'd like to see that. All right, and then how familiar are you with environmental justice? And so the reason that this type of interactive presentation software can be really useful, and we found useful, was it allowed staff to gauge our presentation on the fly. So in certain groups where we had a captive audience, we wanted to make sure that if everyone was saying they don't know what a general plan is, but they know what environmental justice is, we give a little bit more of background and context on what a general plan is, right? These are really dense topics, albeit they're very important, but it can be a huge obstacle when engaging with just stakeholders in general, if they don't know the base information. So, this is what, these are the results from our organized stakeholder roundtables. So these were meetings that were held with organized stakeholders, so nonprofits, community-based organizations, other public or quasi-public agencies, anyone who was coming from an organized position. And as you can see, kind of what you would expect, most people knew what we were talking about. They had a general idea of what a general plan is, an idea of what environmental justice is. But when we look at the at-large workshops, which were open to all general stakeholders, so residents, folks who are employed in Escondido but maybe don't live in Escondido, you can see that it's actually the inverse. So folks were pretty familiar with environmental justice, but less familiar with what a general plan is. And again, this allowed for us to kind of have a more fluid discussion and fill in the blanks where it was needed. All right, so then, what is your experience with housing in Escondido? So this is really an open-ended question. We had a couple of these open-ended where folks could just kind of provide their input. All of this is anonymous, so I can't see who's providing these answers unless you type your name in, which I'm not advising that. But it was a way for people to share their lived experience with housing in Escondido, which is, safe and sanitary housing is a category for environmental justice, the environmental justice element. So it was a great way to obtain that information. We also asked, do you use city parks and recreation centers? Why and why not? Why or why not? So this was, again, a way to gain insight into folks. And of course, in these interactions, we encourage the dialogue or the discussion, but in some instances, right, people might not feel comfortable expressing their opinion verbally or in front of a group, so it also provides an opportunity for them to provide something more anonymously or covertly, rather than being put on the spot. We also asked for their opinions on whether they have access to healthy food in their neighborhood, they have park space in their neighborhood, and whether they want to be more engaged with their community. And the results of these three questions, so as you can see, based on this feedback, generally, more folks felt like they didn't have access to park space in their neighborhoods, and almost half felt they didn't have access to healthy food. Whereas, on the other hand, everyone had a positive reaction and response to wanting to be more civically engaged. So as part of our outreach efforts, we also asked folks what three environmental justice topics are most important to them. So the Senate Bill one thousand, which is the legislation that dictates environmental justice element be created, it outlines specific minimum topics that have to be discussed within that element. They're listed on your screen here. So those are the minimum that we were utilizing to gauge people's interest. Obviously, this allows staff to take into consideration what folks, where their priorities lie in the community. If we see an overwhelming response to one topic or multiple topics, then it allows us to kind of delve further or potentially expand upon those policies further. So when we interacted in person, so at community events where we were tabling, or we were able to have a bit more of an engaged timeframe with individuals, we utilized our activity board. So this is the physical version of what you just saw on the software or the online presentation. And so from all of the activity board dot totals, we found that folks were really prioritizing saving sanitary housing, which I don't think is a huge shock for any of us, food access, and reduction in pollution burden. You can see on these pictures that there are also post-it notes, and these post-it notes were a place for folks, again, to provide some written feedback on these topics, their opinions, their thoughts. And we categorized these written responses, so we applied a qualitative method to identify what the topics of interest were in these written responses. And interestingly, it's a different mix, it's a different spread than what is shown on just the pure dot activity. So in this case, there's a focus on public facilities, as well as civic engagement, and then there is the mirror and the reduction in pollution burden. So we also asked folks, when we were in these situations where we had thirty seconds of attention from people, which typically involved events where there were a lot of children, we asked them two questions. What do you love about where you live? And so it's a pretty blanket, open-ended question, but you can garner a lot of information from the responses. There, you can end up, you can create categories, which we, in this case, used the default environmental justice categories to take these responses, and put them in those categories based on their response, to get an idea of what priorities were based on this question about what they love. We also asked, if you could change one thing about Escondido, what would it be? And again, kind of the flip side of that, what's something that maybe folks are more interested in seeing change occur? And we did the same qualitative method of categorizing these responses based on the default environmental justice categories. So here's just a picture of what that looked like in reality. We would table, and we would engage with folks, and get them to write their responses on post-it notes, and slap them on that board. And again, these were all events where very ephemeral, we had thirty seconds usually. We actually got a really great turnout of children and youth responses at some of these events, so that was really exciting. And this is just a snapshot of some of those responses. So you can see, what do people love about where they live? It ranges, something like food spots or flowers and trees around to beat the heat can tell us a lot about what people's interests are. And again, it's a snapshot in time, it's a quick capture. And then if you could change one thing about Escondido, these were just some of the more common responses. All right, so, again, these responses tend to mirror some of the activity board responses. So you can see, safe and sanitary housing is pretty high up there, public facilities, civic engagement. And then same, if you could change one thing about Escondido, what would you change? High emphasis on public facilities, saving sanitary housing, and then reduction in pollution burden are very, the top three. We did include a wildfire and emergency response topic, since we are working on update to the safety element as well, and we wanted to see what people's priorities or interests were when it came to kind of the qualifier of wildfire or emergency response. And then we had a miscellaneous category just for, you know, when someone had a really left-of-field, whatever the euphemism is, on a response. So that concludes my presentation on what we have done so far in twenty twenty-two. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much. Okay, comments? Questions?
Yeah, very cool. I think I did that at one of your meetings. At the last slide was public facilities. So what's the detail behind that public facility? Is that like pools, or parks, or baseball stadiums?
All of the above. So if it's basically a piece of public infrastructure, it qualifies as a public facility for the purposes of our categorizing. As you could probably imagine, things like parks, pools are a really big topic, especially when we're dealing with families. Anecdotally, there were a lot of people interested in splash pads, in the pools being open for the purposes of just swimming, not laying, swimming, not, you know, organized, but just, it's hot out and I want to go and just hang out in a pool. We also had public facilities in terms of road conditions, sidewalk conditions, or lack thereof. That was a pretty popular topic as well. Pickleball? There probably was one or two pickleball, but it might have been before I knew what pickleball was. It was like, okay. Other comments, questions?
I have some questions. As I, as I think about what environmental justice element means, to me, my understanding of it is, we're taking a couple criteria and identifying, I guess, nine census tracts within the city, right? And we say, these nine census tracts, we identify as having two criteria. Number one, there's environmental concerns. Number two, they're in economically disadvantaged areas. That overlay of those two concerns says we have an environmental injustice that we want to mitigate, we want to repair. So through the outreach, which is, a great effort has been put forth in this outreach, but through the outreach, we're gathering what seems to me to be a wish list of things that are nice, and not focusing on what are the environmental injustices we're looking to rectify. So this outreach is intended to help formulate the direction of policy that we implement through the environmental justice document. So I'm concerned that we're just saying, you know, I look at it like we're saying, hey, you know, we put poison in your water, but we'll give you a sandwich. There's no, there's no connection between the give you this, but the fix that. So that's part of my concern with how we approach this, is we're, we're just saying, where is the, where is the identification of what the problems are? Right? And so I guess part of my questions lie in just that. When I looked at the document that's referenced, there's a guidance document for environmental justice, and it references a few things in it. It says, "The local agency should explain the methods selected for identifying the disadvantaged communities, describe and map their locations, and the disproportionate pollution burdens, health risks, and needs experienced by the community. This information should also be summarized and properly referenced in the plan." So I see our map that says, hey, these nine census tracts are bad, and we need to do something about it. What I don't see is, why are they bad? I look at, you know, the state generates a guidance document to help figure out what tracts are bad, but the state gets, I believe it gathers its data from local resources, like the Air Pollution Control District, for example. Go to the Air Pollution Control District's website, and what they say is, the Escondido's in the zero to fifty good category. There's no indication of what that means. So I don't see the connection. I don't understand where are we identifying what the environmental problem is? Where are we trying to, then, once we identify that, focus our, focus our then policy efforts to fixing those things, instead of giving people a bicycle or a nice sandwich? That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned with, with our efforts to outreach and all of that. So I guess part of my question is, where do we find what those specific environmental concerns are?
Sure. Thank you for that detailed question, and a couple of items to address. The first is, I do want to state that these aren't bad neighborhoods, these aren't bad census tracts, right? These are people's homes, this is where folks live, this is potentially where folks have grown up and never left. They're not inherently bad places, right? They are potentially suffering or being exposed to disproportionate impacts from policy regarding environmental regulation. And so the draft Environmental Justice Community, the initial draft mapping that's on our webpage, identifies the census tracts that Commissioner Spear is speaking about. And that's based on the base analysis that's outlined in that OPR, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research Guidance Document. And that's, that's really a baseline, that's a base analysis to get a general idea of where the concentration of potential environmental issues are. It takes into account, like you said, two factors, but through three specific variables, two socioeconomic income-related variables, and then one environmental variable. And that environmental variable, as you've laid out in your comment and your question, is really difficult, it's dense, it's hard to unpack. And you all are our planning commissioners, you have some exposure to these policy documents, you have some exposure to this process. A lot of folks don't. So if it's difficult for you or for staff to understand that, you can only imagine how arduous this can be for folks who don't deal in this realm, and don't have the time to go out and conduct independent research, or maybe don't even have the resources to do so. They don't have the internet, they don't, English isn't their first language, and, you know, reading scientific reports on environmental issues can be very difficult. So having to distill all of this information down to cover a wide swath of the community, from children, high schoolers, to working folks, to, you know, seniors, people who are non-native English speakers, people who have been historically disenfranchised, like people who are maybe lower income, or vulnerable communities, like those who are experiencing homelessness, it can be incredibly challenging, and it is an obstacle to try and explain all of this at a academic level. So the goal of this phase of outreach, which really is the initial phase, to just adjust where people's priorities are, if they work, live, or play in Escondido, is to do it in a way where we can reach more people, which generally means going to where those folks are, right? How many times do we get, we will hold an outreach meeting here at City Hall, and we get five people. And so being able to go into the community to a meeting or a event where people are free-flowing, it's tons of exposure, is potentially advantageous, and we have to distill that down to something. We have to be realistic, right, with our resources of what we have. In most instances, I was the only staff member doing all of this. So there is unfortunately a reality to that resource limitation. Also, I want to clarify that those census tracts, those are preliminary, they're the initial baseline analysis. Further local analysis still has to be completed, that's currently underway. So we're looking at more localized data still on top of that kind of state-directed base analysis. So we're looking at things like, where are all the grocery stores in the city? Where are all the gas stations? Where are all the convenience stores? Where are all of our smoke shops, liquor shops? Where is all of our park space? Where is all of our park space? You know, how accessible is that park space? Are there sidewalks? Are there bike lanes? So we're looking at a lot of that city of Escondido-based data, which has to be fielded from our GIS department, our engineering, capital improvements project, programs division. In some instances, it's pulling records, business licenses, and converting that to GIS data, so unfortunately, it takes time. And we are almost finished with that. As a result of doing all of this analysis, we will have method, methodology, kind of like a white paper equivalent, as an appendix to the environmental justice element, to ensure that people understand how we got from point A to point B. So for example, on this preliminary, because this is just preliminary base mapping, we haven't refined that methodology, it's, it exists. It's not necessarily in a place where it's digestible, it's kind of a work-in-progress document, where everything is documented to make sure that everyone understands how we arrived there. And when we get to a phase where we have a final draft, or a first initial draft of the environmental justice element, that will be a part of it.
So I guess we will have documentation that accompanies the, the findings of that in the document itself. Will that documentation, for example, we could say, hey, we, we went to this, these particular nine tracts, and we said, hey, grocery stores are this far away, how is that going to compare to the rest of the city? How do we know that that's any better or worse than the rest of the city? Is that going to be in the document as well?
Correct. So we will be providing a comparative analysis based on this preliminary draft of the EJ communities, right? So we use that state guidance, the state says, at minimum, jurisdictions should be using these three criteria, these three variables, to define their environmental justice communities. But we really suggest you use a lot more, and we really suggest you use local data specifically, as opposed to state data, which is more broad, as you've noted. So we've done that baseline to figure out where kind of we're seeing potential environmental justice issues, based on the state's direction, and then we're overlaying that local data, and we'll be doing a comparison against it citywide, right? It's very hard to look at it in a vacuum when you say, oh, there's X amount of this in this area of the city, and it's like, compared to what? So we, we will be using the city as the comparison.
Taking that, then, are we going to be focusing our policy implementation at mitigating those negative effects, instead of just saying, let's put a park here, let's, you know, throw up a merry-go-round? Are we going to actually aim our policy at, if there's disparity between those communities and the rest of Escondido, making it less of a difference?
A hundred percent. That's the entire kind of purpose of this element, is to remedy those disproportionate impacts, those historic impacts that have potentially been levied against these communities, based on this analysis of looking at kind of land use distribution policy that has allowed for certain uses or developments to go in certain places, et cetera. So that's what those policies will be based on.
Thank you.
I would also add, I think it's really interesting that there are many jurisdictions are going through this process right now, and so there's plenty of lessons to be learned across, cross-fertilization, across cities, I would hope.
And a note on that, as part of this process, staff does do document review of adopted environmental justice elements, so we don't only look at guidance from the state, we also look at other jurisdictions who've approved environmental justice elements, and we look at what they're doing. And we do utilize a constructive qualitative analysis on, you know, is this city we're looking at similar to Escondido? Does it have similar demographics, similar population? And we take that into account as well.
Excellent. Any other comments? Questions?
It would be nice if Escondido could be a little more innovative than just the typical city. So I hope that's kept in the thought process as you go through these practices, because I feel like we do have the potential to be truly innovative at the point that the city is in. Wishful thinking here.
In a positive way.
Staff appreciates that direction.
Well, and also, have you, have you thought about WAC audits? I know that's a, a strategy or a technique for
Yes.
Community, community-engaged analysis.
Great, yeah, that's a really excellent point. So as part of this outreach process, which we're not finished with, this is just kind of the first hump, the first big phase of data collection, right? We're starting really broad, and then we're working down to a more narrowed focus. So currently, staff is working with the Healthy Escondido Coalition to organize a WAC audit. The idea is that the WAC audit or WAC audits would be, once we've solidified the environmental justice communities, and the WAC audits would be focused on where those preliminary environmental justice communities have been firmly identified. And the goal would be to target folks who reside, or work, or spend a lot of time in those areas, to get their lived experience input during those WAC audits.
It generally engages leadership within that neighborhood community in the actual audit, correct? So that's not just city staff wandering around, there's actually local people who are engaged in the WAC process?
Yes, and that's why we're working with this community-based organization, who, to try and shift that power dynamic of, here's giving more agency and authority to folks from those areas, to lead it, and city staff is really listening, really more trying to gain that insight and that information for the purposes of the policy.
And my last question would be is around challenges. What would you say are your biggest challenges going forward, other than understaffed, probably, and under-resourced? Is there anything that jumps out at you?
In my opinion, and based on what I've experienced, translation is a huge issue. We have a significant amount of folks in the city, within the city, whether they live here or work here, or just are here frequently, who are not necessarily native English speakers. Obviously, just anecdotally, we probably all know, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking in the community, but there are other populations of, of languages within the city that we don't translate and don't have translation services for. So that's, that's definitely a large obstacle, and something that inhibits civic engagement, which is a topic of environmental justice. If you don't know something's happening, or you're unable to understand a meeting because it's in one language, or something of that nature, it, it's an obstacle, so that, that's definitely, becomes a bit meta. We'll be looking and reviewing that type of thing as a part of the policy.
Thanks. Anything else? Commendable job, though, that's excellent. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation and good discussion. We look forward to the next phase. Future agenda items? Does, does the commissioners have any, anything at the moment for the future? No? Oral communications? I don't think so. Adam, no?
None.
Planning commissioners, any particular comments, or, yes? Commissioner Paul?
Don't leave. Don't leave. So I just wanted to, this is going to be a long-winded thank you, but I'm on the clean energy, we have an organization called the Clean Energy Alliance, they have a community advisory committee, which I'm a member, and that has a subcommittee called the Local Program Subcommittee, and I'm a member of that subcommittee. And so I just want to thank the planning staff, Adam, for allowing staff time, and Veronica for being that staff time to, to help with the review of our climate action plan in relation to the other communities. I really appreciate that, and so does the rest of the committee. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Okay, great. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Say again, thank you for the thoughtful idea to bring in the planning group and give us a little education, that was very thoughtful and appreciated. And Veronica, for all your, you did a lot, a lot of hard work, and you did well, so thank you.
Great, okay. City planners' report.
So, thank you, Chair Barber. First, I want to say that it's a, I was, and I know he was very disappointed, Commissioner Barber, that he couldn't be here. He was the one who kind of put the bug in my ear about the planning 101 kind of, or the development review process 101 item, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but I, I'm going to give him a private tutorial on it myself, so when he, when he's feeling better, I'll be working with him, so he can have the same kind of instruction that you guys had here. And I'm glad you got a lot out of that, and I do also very much appreciate the kind words you, you mentioned about Veronica's efforts with the CEA Subcommittee that you were working, that you're working on, or that you're a part of there, so. Next meeting, we have, we'll have two items, two public hearing items on that agenda. One of them is the Business Recovery Strategy Ordinance Update, so we've got some measures that were part of the, that were adopted back in 2020 as part of the Business Recovery Strategy. As temporary measures, we are going to be bringing forward a, an agenda item to make permanent some of those measures, that'll be something that'll be, that we're working through the details of, be presenting that next, next meeting for a recommendation to city council. And then the other item is the Northeast Gateway Subdivision, it's a 64-unit tentative subdivision map, involves a minor specific plan amendment as well. You'll get more info on that in the staff report, and there's some information available online as well. On that one, the applicant had reached out to me, and I had forwarded that contact info to you folks, and if you wanted to get in, get in touch with them, they are still interested, he asked that I reiterate that, that invitation. One of the items that were, I'll kind of back up, the, the kind of tentative agenda schedule, or the tentative schedule of agenda items that I provide, one of them that was on there, that's no longer, is that Northeast Gateway specific plan, that should have remained on there, that was a mistake of mine for having removed it already. There was another item that was on there, and Commissioner Paul had asked about this, that was the camp or Project 10X, I don't remember specifically what it was called, that's no longer on there, that has been withdrawn, so just for your knowledge on that, just wanted to make that, make you guys aware, because I know that, Commissioner Paul, you picked up that it was no longer on there, so that was not a mistake, that was actually withdrawn. Beyond that, I am really excited to have this new year upon us, and to have this commission that's, that's ever so engaged, so thank you, guys.
And just a footnote to logistics, I will not be at the next meeting, so Commissioner Paul will be chairing it.
Great.
All right, so with that, thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned. The gavel's back.